Let's call this meeting to order. It's the Danville City Commission, a special called meeting, Monday, March the 22nd, 2021. This is our 5:30 PM, which is sort of like our regular meeting, but due to COVID regulations, we're still calling them all special called meetings. We're going to be led in prayer by Commissioner Terry and followed by Commissioner Cottle in the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. Almighty God, I'm asking you to put peace in the hearts of those who are filled with hate. I pray that all plans to destroy this country will fail. I ask you to help find what will end COVID-19. I ask for you to guide all people towards you and towards peace. Thank you for all the blessings you have giving, given my family and this city. I ask that you keep us safe from harm, danger, sickness, and to keep us mentally, emotionally, physically, and spiritually well, so that we may contribute our best to our fellow citizens. I pray that we continue to become one nation under God and to give us the opportunity to encourage love and encourage each other, bless and protect our first responders and military as they protect our freedoms. Amen.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You get a key to the city? Does he get a key to the city?
He gets a key to the city, a used one, right? Every time I say the pledge recently, I've been wanting to say until which she stands, I want to put that word she in there. Fellow commissioners, you all have seen the agenda, and I guess with your approval, if there are not any questions or additions or corrections, we'll proceed with the agenda as published. Okay, so that takes us to our next item. The next item on the agenda is to hear the public, and we invite people from the public to speak to us about questions and items that are currently on the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, do you have anyone who's asked to speak on here the public section?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, we've allowed some folks to come in to our meeting tonight. Are they here to hear, to speak to us about something on the agenda?
They are not. They are here to observe items on the agenda that affect them. There's three people here to do that.
All right.
Well, two, I'm counting Brent, I'm sorry, with, he's on the agenda separately.
Okay. Well, the next, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation in recognition of National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I've asked Commissioner Holland if she would read that proclamation for us.
For Child Abuse Prevention Month 2021, whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their, their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of the community, and whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, it be resolved that Mayor Michael Paris and city commissioners of the city of Danville on this 22nd day of March 2021, recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens to increase their participation in the efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair will entertain a motion.
We accept the proclamation and record.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second? All those in favor say aye.
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 And I want to be sure to call attention to the audience that it says child abuse prevention. We don't sort of stress that word enough. You know, people hear the word child abuse, but we're saying child abuse prevention. Thank you. Okay. Approval of the minutes, the previous meeting's the next item. Commissioners, wish your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting dated 3/8/21.
Second.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions, corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes? All right. So, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next on the agenda is an update from the Boil County Health Department. Mr. Brent Blevins is here to give us that update.
Hey there. I always appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys a little bit about what we're seeing out in the U of U and what's going on, and a little bit of numbers. So, let's just start with the numbers.
Thanks. I won't go through that spiel again. We'll just start with the numbers. Okay, so, this is going to be between EFRAM and the Health Department, the numbers that we have done so far as far as giving shots. EFRAM has completed 2,120 complete series of shots, so that's two shots to do that. So, that would actually be 4240, plus they've done an additional 2,460 first shots, that those people will then have to come back and get that second round. So, that's a 6,700 total for EFRAM. At the Health Department, we've done 3,102, and out of that, right at 2,800 are complete series, and we still got about 300 to complete the series coming up in the next couple of weeks. And for EFRAM, most of those have been, or those have been Moderna. For us, all but 200 have been Moderna. The other 200 were Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so, we were excited to get the Johnson &amp; Johnson in. The way that's playing out for us, we, when they gave us the initial 200 doses, I guess that's been three weeks ago now, Harding Kentucky United Way did the signups for us. Thank goodness, that was a huge help. And our signups, we had 150 slots filled up in one hour, is how fast that went. So, I thought by now we would have more Johnson &amp; Johnson, but there was a holdup. And the way that turned out was the federal government sent all they had to the states, the states sent it down to the local level, all those doses were sent out, but they had some kind of holdup on getting the next round of Johnson &amp; Johnson to us. So, I'm looking forward to when we get more Johnson &amp; Johnson, because at the Health Department, we've switched over. We're finishing our Moderna second rounds, and then we're going all Johnson &amp; Johnson, because at this point, the one series seems to be maybe the ability to get people in that wouldn't come in before. We did, in the last couple of weeks, we focused on some groups intentionally, because there could be some hesitancy for some of these groups for people to get the shot. So, we had some connections, and we worked with a Hispanic group and an African-American group, and also an older adult group. And our hope is, is then those people that came in those groups can go back in those communities and let people know, yes, they got the shot, it was okay, there was no bias or anything like that, they were, they were fine after the shot, other than the normal type issues that any of us could have after the vaccine. And so, I was real excited about that, because I think we reached some communities and some groups that maybe not, would not have walked in the door if we hadn't pushed that. So, I'm hoping that that increases, and we get more people out of those populations, as in general, the population overall. At this point, and you've probably seen the stories are starting to come out in the newspapers and on social media about, there are actually places now that cannot fill up all their shot appointment times. I was on a call this past week with the commissioner, and UK was on there, and they're running, I forget how many thousands a day, through the UK Kroger field site. And just in the last week or two, they've started having openings, open slots that they have not been able to fill, which is not something we would have anticipated a month ago. I mean, who would have thought we would have been at this point this fast? So, that's where we are on the shots. I think here in Danville, we've moved along rapidly, and I think it's been a, it's been a good effort. I really like the effort that we've been able to do, along with EFRAM. EFRAM's been tremendous standing that up. So, the cases as of yesterday were 3,236 total in Boyle County, and the death numbers finally caught up with what we've been reporting at the Health Department for a while. If you look on the, the state website now, it shows 60, I believe. And that, I think the last time I reported, we knew of 57. So, those two numbers have finally matched. And what happens is, and I think the governor talked about this on one of his press conferences, that anytime there's a death in a county now, that has to go through a committee at the state level. It goes through a lot of levels, and then it gets to a committee at the state level, and they have to totally review it to verify, yes, they're saying that was COVID or not. And honestly, they just had such a backlog, they couldn't get it, the numbers together, and they finally did. And I think the numbers, from my aspect for Boyle County and Danville are a true number now. So, I think when you look at 60, that's right about where we have been throughout this past year of deaths related to COVID, or not even necessarily related. These are deaths that were directly attributed to COVID, is a better way of saying that. So, the message for us now, a couple of different things. Number one is people, that the people who are going to get the vaccine, sign up and go get it. I think the governor said in two weeks, it's going to be open to anybody 16 and older anyway, and pretty much now, you can get in if you want a shot. So, that's the message we're just trying to put out to people. Go get the vaccine if you want it, and hopefully, a lot of people do. If you look at the number, and not all of EFRAM's numbers, and not all the Health Department numbers will be just straight Boyle County, but if we're at almost 10,000, and you know, Boyle County's population is 30,000, but obviously, not all those people live here. So, let's say that we've vaccinated, let's just say, 6,000 actual Boyle, Danville residents. You know, we're approaching a third of our 30,000, but we're not there yet. So, if you look at flu shot numbers, we're generally in the 40% range anyway, and I don't expect this to be much different. However, I hope this first year, it's more than that, and then I expect in years to come, that it'll be more like the flu numbers. But, that is one of our key messages right now, is just encouraging people to go do that. Whatever their hesitancy is, let's figure out how to get around that and get a shot, if they'll do it. And then the second one is, is that COVID has not gone away. COVID is still here. We worked on a cluster over this weekend, where it was a pretty small group gathering, and ended up, I don't know, five to seven or eight cases out of this. And so, those situations are still working, and it can still be very difficult. COVID can be very difficult on populations when it gets started in a small setting like that. So, we've kind of narrowed it down to those two things right now, as far as what we're trying to focus on, and helping people and understand where we are. Obviously, our, thank goodness, Boyle County, we finally made it out of the red on the map. I, I forget, I think we're orange now, I believe, and I might have that wrong. We're either yellow or orange. And, you know, for about four months, I didn't think necessarily we'd ever see those, those colors again. So, I'm really glad of that, glad we made it to that, glad our cases have been lowered. I'm really proud of our schools for getting back in session. They have worked tremendously hard to do that, and that is hard. I've been behind the scenes, some listening to how they plan, and that is extremely difficult, what they've accomplished, to get them back in school. Okay, that's my info for tonight. Any questions? I'd be glad to...
I was sharing with someone tonight that I'd gotten a little COVID update statewide, and there's 570 sites across the state of Kentucky, one can get registered and go get a shot. And I want to encourage all of the citizens of Danville, and especially all the citizens of all age categories, and especially all those citizens that we consider to be, like myself, marginalized people in this community, I've had both shots at zero reactions, and a lot of people, my family have had the shot, and so, I've just been encouraging everyone to go out and get the shot, please.
Thank you. You're exactly right.
That, you said they're actually more available vaccines than there are arms to put them in right now? So, the new vaccine that's coming out, I mean, are they just too late to the game, or will that help, you think, or what's your...
I absolutely think the Johnson &amp; Johnson, the one shot is the deal. I think most...
There's a new one, though, this morning, they said.
Oh, the, not the Janssen, but the, yes, I've drawn a blank on it, but yes. I think the one shots are going to be the way of the future. I think, because it's just, well, let me back up. I've learned over doing this since December 23rd, the logistics of doing two shots for people is incredibly hard, incredibly. And I, I did not anticipate how difficult that piece would be, not only for us, but for EFRAM. You're just trying to keep up with people, and they change numbers, they change addresses, they change jobs, all those things in that period of time, and trying to keep up with that. So, when we did the 150 Johnson &amp; Johnson to the public, it was amazing how much easier that was to get people in the door, and how much faster they seemed to respond when they signed it up. They knew it was one shot, they came in, they waited their 15 minutes, and they were gone. And they would say that to us, say, hey, thank you for the one shot, we don't have to come back, we're good. So, I think that's the deal. Now, I don't, I don't know how Moderna and Pfizer will change over the, I would assume they'll probably adapt their shots to be a one shot. I haven't heard that, I'm just guessing that, because I think now with all these coming out. Along with that, I have not heard if there's actually going to be a booster on the Moderna or Pfizer based on the variants coming out. The one good thing is, and you probably saw this in the media last, well, it's probably been two or three weeks ago, they had an outbreak in a nursing type facility out in eastern Kentucky. And the backstory on that was, is one person came in that was unvaccinated, that they actually pinned it down, that person actually brought in a variant of the, of COVID. And what they found was, is they ended up, I'll probably have my numbers a little off, but let's say 40 or 50 people ended up being sick. And they found out the people that had been vaccinated, it didn't matter what shot they had gotten, that they had much less, if they even showed symptoms, they had much less severe symptoms. And the people that ended up in the hospital, one of them had actually been vaccinated, but their symptoms were much less than the people who had been unvaccinated. The people that were unvaccinated were similar to what we'd seen all along through this year. So, Dr. Stack, the Commissioner of Department of Public Health, was very encouraged by that, because he felt, and I think a lot of the sentiment was, is with the shots we've given so far, that even on the variants that we've seen so far, and this was actually not the South Africa or any of those variants, this was a different one, that it's, it does make some difference if you've had the shot or not. So, that's what we want. That's what we've been striving for.
Good. Other questions or comments?
So, do you think right now people are, are holding out a little bit for the one shot?
I think that's probably some of them, yes, I do. It would have been nice if we'd have got the Johnson &amp; Johnson at the beginning, or whatever, but it just didn't play out. But I think you're exactly right.
Okay.
Well, and my advice is, if you're offered one, or if you're offered two, get in line for both of them. Don't let any of it go to waste. But I know it's easier to get it one time than the second one.
And up until about two weeks ago, you're exactly right. That was true. And then people just jumped in line, and then that changed.
I just want to thank you for being proactive and actually reaching out to the elderly groups and the Hispanic community and African-American group. Job well done, because sometimes you have to reach out, and they won't always come to you. So, thank you for doing that.
I appreciate that.
And as always, thank you for everything that you have done and continue to do.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate you all, and I'll catch you again at another time.
Appreciate your efforts. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number four. It's a zone, zone change recommendation for 1695 Lancaster Road.
I'll take it.
Okay.
So, at the last meeting, we had the recommendation, Mr. Hunter is here to, if you need him to answer questions. Also, is the, the property owners present in, in the meeting. And the record was officially, I guess, adopted around the 24th of the month, and given to staff, city engineer Josh Morgan, who evaluated that based on comments that we had at the previous meeting. And he made the conclusion and wrote a, provided a memo for you, which is the last page of your packet, basically addressing the, seemed to be the questions that were, that were identified at the meeting, but did confirm that these items attached were not fully, I guess, addressed with, with the conditions of the zone change. You would typically say, could not answer those, that they were fully discussed at all times during, during the record. That doesn't necessarily matter per se, that's just a matter of his observation based upon the, his review of the record, and also the review of the actual recommendation by planning and zoning. So, at this time, I guess, Steve, you, you can revisit what the commission's options are.
Sure. So, upon receipt of a recommendation from the planning commission, you remember you have 90 days to take action on it. And that action either means you accept the recommendation and approve it as presented, or you deny the recommendation. And when you deny the recommendation, you do so either by accepting the record as presented and create your own findings of fact, or you can have a new hearing, and if there are things devoid in the record that you feel need to be addressed, at which time, you would make your own conclusion after that hearing, whether to approve or deny the applicant's request. So, where we are in this process is that you've received a recommendation, and the recommendation is to approve the zone change. Because of dialogue that transpired at your last meeting, city engineer did a review of the record and presented the memo that is before you in your packet. You should take that as a collectively, as you review the record that the planning commission presented to you. And at this point, from a process standpoint, you are either ready to entertain a motion to approve the zone change as presented, deny the zone change based upon certain findings of fact, or decide to have a rehearing to further develop the record. Those are the options that are before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but that is where we are today.
Thank you, Steve. And staff does not have necessarily a strong recommendation in any direction. We would certainly defer to what your all's judgment of the record is, and that, that's what your role is, and await your direction.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we uphold the P&amp;Z's recommendation for the zone change as is presented for discussion purpose.
I'll second.
Comments, questions?
I, I think we should uphold it. I worked in planning for several years, so number one, I know the planning commission is very educated, is trained. The, the hearing was very thorough. I, I talked to Josh a little bit. These are really good questions, just from when I worked at planning and still now. All the first questions, you already address at site plan, which is the next step. So, you approve a zone change based on state law, which is consistent with, does it, you know, is it consistent with the flu, is it consistent with goals and objectives? And it was, and the planning commission saw that. These things will need addressed, but I feel like you can, they're usually all addressed at site plan. We could add some conditions if engineering thinks right now, we need to add, you know, geological analysis. But really, every single item here, the engineers always addressed at site plan, always. And do you still do technical review? Okay. And engineers come, and, and I asked Josh just to make sure that engineering signs off. Yeah. So, that makes me feel better, like engineering will not sign off on it until all their requests are met. So, that, that, that's just how I view it, is more from a planning and zoning standpoint, so.
Other comments?
The main concern I have is what seems to be inconsistencies with conditions between different cases. So, another zone change that we recently approved has eight conditions with it, and they're very specific. There are three conditions with this one, and they're not very specific, and I just am not very comfortable with that.
I kind of disagree, just because I've seen so many zone changes, and this is, to me, about as specific as you can be about a Rick House. However, it just seems like, do they have a choice between the concept plan and the condition list? Because some of these that I've seen had no concept plan, but more conditions, and others had a concept plan, but then you don't need as many conditions.
Yeah, I'll address that. So, the zoning ordinance says a general development plan is what's required to be submitted with the zone change request. The term general development plan can be written or conceptual, graphic. So, sometimes we get a concept plan that's truly just a graphic exhibit, and there's been times that that concept plan may be, may enumerate conditions on that graphic exhibit. Then sometimes we get a combination of a graphic exhibit and a signed set of conditions, and then there's other times we just get one through whatever as conditions. The zoning ordinance allows the flexibility to do kind of a combination, but the general development...
development plan, by definition, has to come in with a zone change request. Problem with the concept plan as a visual, we're trying to, we're trying to clean up what we record in the courthouse. So having those written conditions, we're now requiring the developers to sign those conditions after the planning commission meeting, because a lot of times the conditions that are submitted with the application evolve on the floor of the planning commission. And they get wordsmithed, or they get additions or deletions. So then after we come out of the planning commission, we want to make sure that general development plan is in a recordable form, kind of like deed restrictions. So the written textual ones seem to end up better because they go in the land use certificate book, and then they are recorded, or they're in our office. But a lot of them, I think, we did four zone changes that day, and I think all four of them had a concept plan and had some numbered conditions. And they all vary because the way the staff sees it, it's not our job to submit the general development plan, it's our job to guide the applicant on what's required to be submitted. But for example, we can't have an applicant say, look, you only did three, we want nine. We typically send out draft conditions, like samples or suggestions, and I think we did that with these guys two different times. We sent out suggested conditions, more topical in nature. Hey, you need to do something about building footprint, that would be helpful. Look at your uses, either prohibited uses, or allowable uses, or some combination. But we don't word submit their conditions down to the sentence because they're the property owner, and they're the only ones that can buy in their property. So they have to submit something that then the planning commission debates at the hearing. So they do vary. And for example, the other two distilleries in town, one of them was zoned with no conditions, and one of them was zoned with no concept plan, but written conditions.
Just from my experience, this was more specific than what I had seen in three years. So that was just, but these are, these questions all do need asked, you know, at the site plan level, period. They need asked. Can you add at site plan a geological analysis requirement, or would that be now?
It could happen either.
Okay. But you could require
So when the site plan comes in, we have one this week, we send it to City Public Works, and we send it to the fire department the day we get them. And then they have the ability to make comments. It's good to get the comments early, so then the applicant can be working on those. And then, as you mentioned, tech review is one week from the filing deadline that City Public Works can attend and literally go back and forth with the developer. So I think any kind of issue can be addressed at the site development plan, especially if it's engineering-related drainage, stormwater, can happen at the site development plan. But if the commission's desire is to get specific conditions, then I think your attorneys already said, you guys have to almost go down the path of a new hearing to revise the general development plan.
And as I left the last meeting, that's where I really thought the commission was headed. And after reading this letter dated the thirteenth of March, that sort of took me down the pipe, down that road to think about the fact that we're adding new stuff to the mix, to the conversation, and the only way to address these things, but also the only way to allow the property owners a chance to address these things is to have another hearing. We sponsor our own city commission hearing, and in essence, almost like start all over again. That's where I was after reading all this stuff.
So at what point is a traffic impact study required, like, does that need to be a condition? Or does that need to be added to the site plan?
It could be triggered at the site plan if city engineer wants it to be triggered. All they got to say is, we want a traffic study. But what's interesting, there was an initial traffic analysis by the developers engineer that was submitted with the first zone change request a year ago, and the determination was a rickhouse solely just a rickhouse and distiller without the visitation center, similar to what IJW did out on Lebanon Road, did not meet the threshold to meet the five hundred average daily trips of a traffic study. So it would be the tourism aspect, visitation center, the other uses that come with a distillery that would generate the higher frequencies of traffic. So out on Lebanon Road, there wasn't a traffic study done on either case, because when IJW came in initially, that was just rickhouses. And there's very few employees, there's truck traffics, but it's not a lot of visitors or tourism aspect until the visitation centers developed and other amenities that maybe draw tourists.
So hypothetically, let's say the zone change goes through, and then at site plan, a geological analysis is done, and something is found.
Comes a condition of the site plan.
What, I mean, what if it's found that it can't be developed for geological reasons? What happens? Are we locked into that zone?
So that's why it happens at the site plan, because at the zone change level, it's a concept plan for, it's conceptual. A lot of times at the zone change level, there's an option on the property, and we're just trying to see if it's compatible. Comprehensive plan is basically about compatibility of the use in the general surrounding area. It's spelled out in the comprehensive plan. To get down into the engineering of drainage and stormwater and traffic and access are elements of a site development plan. And you're correct, at the site development plan, if there's a big hiccup, there's a problem with stormwater or drainage or access, yeah, it could be that the project couldn't go forward. But it's more appropriate to do the engineering at that point than to do it on the front end of the zone change where things are conceptual, the property's not even under, it's not even the owners at that point to maybe do some of that due diligence. And it's just, again, most of the zone changes that we've done in this community, a lot of those things are attached to the site plan, have been historically.
Part of the reason we had delayed this was because we had some questions about water and sewer. Is now the time to ask that again, or can staff bring forth that information, or is that considered new information?
You really are supposed to consider the record as developed.
Okay.
And not take new facts at this time. Let me say a couple of things. I think what you are seemingly struggling with a bit is the type of information you have at this stage of the game, because the city commission, for all practical purposes, will only consider this matter at this time. After your decision today or hereafter on this issue, it becomes entirely a planning commission issue with involvement from the appropriate city staff as far as utilities or public works. But this is the only time you will touch it, so to speak. So if there is additional, I think there's two things at issue here. One is a sense that you want certain things to be presented before you at a zone change request, and that is a separate topic. If you want a concept plan as a part of the zone change process, then we can have a text amendment that provides for that. It has been the strong tradition of this body to have a visual concept plan at every zone change. At least in my tenure at the city, it's rare that they are written. It is most common that there is a visual conceptual depiction at every zone change. Is that required? No. It's been your tradition. If you want it, then there could be a text amendment to do that, but that's a separate process from what's before you today. I think what the, the planning director is indicating too, is, or underscoring somewhat, when concept plans are presented, you often get into site plan discussions at a zone change hearing, and that is not appropriate. So while they are often provided as points of information, they can divert a conversation where a zone change hearing becomes a site plan review, which is inappropriate under the law and not what you are guided to do. Those are important conversations to be had, and if you want more of a say in those review, or you want to at least review it, then there should be text amendments to the planning ordinance to provide for it. However, ultimately today, when you back up, your job as a commission is to answer one, frankly, very simple question, and that is this: is the proposed zone appropriate? Is it appropriate? And when you make that consideration, you review the comprehensive plan, which is a big document. You can require traffic studies, you can have technical information that is a requirement in the purview of the planning commission, but there's a host of things that can be required. There will never be a zone change that checks every box of a comprehensive plan. It's just, it's too massive a document, and intentionally so, because not everything is appropriate at every stage of review. However, what you have to be comfortable with is that the information provided to you in underlying record proves that the applicant's request is appropriate. So you have to decide, does the record get you to a place that shows that the zone change is appropriate, or that the current zoning is inappropriate? That's the central question that you're asking. But these other things that you are grappling with, I understand, because we, and they have become more and more so as we've gone along, which to me dictates that we probably need a review of the text of the zoning ordinance, or to see if there are other text amendments that would be appropriate in your review process. That's separate from what we're doing today, but I understand as these questions continue to creep up at every zone change, that that may be the appropriate form of recourse for this body.
And I think, I think part of our, part of our questioning relates back to the fact that this is thirty acres out of a three hundred acre project, eventually project. Then I think the other thing that we're grappling about is that, if I was to think about what I've heard from the public, is that I've heard lots of stuff about, from the public about two things. And that is about the traffic, and the second thing is about the historical house that's on the remaining part of the property, which is not a part of this proposal that's on the table. But those are two, those are two issues that we need to make sure that this applicant is well aware of, because we're, we're getting lots of comments and whatever from it. But again, thirty acres plus, versus the three hundred acres, and I know I'm just addressing the thirty acres today, but that's a part of the, that's a part of our deliberation as well.
And that's what I was going to add, one extra note of your record that's not clear by the minute. At the first zone change and future land use map amendment, so there's been two other hearings, there were neighbors in this room, in fact, a pretty good amount of neighbors at the first meeting. Some conditions were suggested, and at the second meeting, the count went down. And at the zone change hearing we had in January, there was, I believe, nobody there in opposition. There was one concern, maybe that was opposition, about the house, but several of the neighbors that attended the first two hearings were not there. And that could have been due to COVID or the circumstance, but I don't think we had any there, anybody in formal opposition at that hearing, just a couple in support, and they were really part of the development team. So, and I'd also say, going to your attorney's comment, we are working hard. Every zone change I think you've seen this year or last year had both a graphic concept plan and a written. We're trying to get both every time, and I can't think of one time we just got one or the other. So I think it's working, but if it's not to the degree the commission feels comfortable in those enumerated conditions, then you have that option before you every time to revise those.
Okay. Yeah. Well, even last time, the only reason I pulled my second was, you know, because the city manager brought up water sewer, but in my mind, I was thinking, why is that being brought up at a zone change? That's a site plan issue, but I thought maybe the new book was different, so I went back and read the book, but it wasn't. So I would have never pulled my second even last time, knowing that that was a site plan issue still, because in the past, it always was.
Well, there's two, there's two different layers to that. There's one, the broad concept that it would, affirming that water and sewer is, will be provided to the property, or utilities in general are provided to the property, and then the detail that's a lot of times on the site plan is exactly how that happens. Right? And so those are two different layers of consideration, and we have traditionally placed conditions on zone changes where water, sewer, or services weren't immediately accessible as defined by the ordinance, or available as defined by the ordinance, affirming by the developer directly how that would happen generally. Right? Those are still, you can have a concept of that versus a detailed plan of that. So there is that nuance that I think is not, that is being easily diminished by just calling it a site plan item. Yeah, the detail of it is, but the concept is not, is still a higher level view, so.
And further to that point, it's very standard that if you're going to make a zone change request, and you consider the intended use, is it suitable for development is a major question that has to be overcome and answered. And utility provision is central to answering that question. So if the record is devoid of that, then, I mean, that is an appropriate question at this time, as opposed to site plan review, because it, either the presence or lack of utilities are essential in determining whether something is quote unquote "developable", "develop-able" or not.
Right. And again, that's two different, there's two different layers to that. There's the detail and then the other. But I digress and turn it back over to you all.
And you also want to think, as far as traffic is concerned and things of those nature, we often think about what the intended use is going to be, but that's not always what's most accurate for you to think about. You need to think about the zoning classification as opposed to the use. There can be current traffic impact based on its current zoning, as I believe if some of this was, I know it's agriculture, but there's also some component of highway business there.
With no conditions.
With no conditions, meaning there could be significant traffic impact based on its current zoning as well.
But the proposal was to go to light industrial, thirty acres, with the use being limited to a distillery and accessory uses.
I'm going to beep Mr. Ackerman to call a question.
What was that? It's been called, it's been called for the question, okay. This is a zone change recommendation for sixteen ninety-five Lancaster Road. The motion was made, and second that we approve the recommendation as presented to us by planning and zoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay.
So as is our custom, I will prepare the ordinance to that effect, and which will come on for a first reading at the first meeting in April, which is the second Monday of the month, whatever that date is. Thirteenth? Fifteenth? Twelve?
One of those days.
Check outlook.
Where you guys going? Come back here. Let's move on then. Item number five, Resolution 2021-03, healthcare plan renewal proposal. Randy Boyd and your guests, in lieu of just what happened, I'm going to ask you for a shortened presentation, a brief presentation?
Well, we'll make it quick and comprehensive at the same time, to the best of our abilities. So if you don't hold it to me, you hold me accountable for that. But thank, good evening, everybody. So in front of you is our proposal for our healthcare renewals for the 2021, 2022 plan year, which our plans renew May one each year and runs through April thirtieth of the following year. With me, I have Wendell Shriclan from Strong Side Solutions, our broker. The city manager and I have been working with Wendell pretty extensively over the last thirty days, looking at our renewals, and so we've asked him to come in and kind of support us as we provide you some of the technical analysis of our renewals. So as we know, healthcare can be very complicated, it can be very comprehensive. We're going to try to kind of go through this in a very simple format, and we're going to look at, talk about the different plans that we offer under, when we talk about health plan, it's not just our medical, it's our comprehensive plans, dental, life, vision, everything that we offer to our employees. So we're going to go run through this, and if you have any questions as we go through this, or if there's anything that you'd like for us to stop and kind of expand on, please let me know, and we'll answer any questions that you have. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to start with the medical plans. Obviously, our current plan is a self-insured plan. We use a third-party administrator trust mark with our carrier being a national network through Cigna. When we went through the plan, we asked Strong Side to look at a renewal options put out for market, not only self-insured, but level-funded and fully insured plans, because we wanted to explore all of our options with that. because we wanted to explore all of our options with that. At the end of the day, and we'll talk about the, the renewal rates here in just a second. But when we went through that option and at the recommendation of the information brought back to Strong Side, staff is recommending that we renew with our existing self insured plan. But I will, and we will talk about this, we are facing a rate increase and we'll kind of get into that here in just a minute, which I'd like to kind of, you know, Wendell, if you could kind of just explain a little bit of what you found out in the market on the medical for us.
Is anybody hearing me okay? Hey, everybody, thank you so much for having me. I'm Wendell Strickland, I'm the CEO of Strong Side Solutions. And as you're probably aware, we're a professional services company, provides broker services and cost containment services for health insurance plans and other benefits. And so this past year, currently, your loss ratio, your claims ratio was running at 165.8%. That means that every dollar you gave Cigna, you spent $1.65. So you were running pretty hot. So working with the administration, we looked at every possible opportunity we could, as Randy had mentioned, including fully insured, which is kind of going backwards, level funded, which is kind of a middle step in your current self funded. And then in your self funded marketplace, we went to 11 different markets. And after going through all that analysis, and as you can imagine, it was, you know, probably a six inch binder full of spreadsheets and several hour conversation. The, the administration and I agree that we should renew with your current plan and, and, and look at those options. There were several declinations in there. You've got several ongoing high cost claimants and those types of things. One of the shining spots that we had was your pharmacy. We were able to look at the Angel RX programs that Strong Side Solutions has and pull down your pharmacy claims by about 136,000. And to date, and you don't even know this, we had $54,000 of an additional savings we've identified. And then this past week, we had another 50,000 come in, so we're at another 100,000. So we're hoping that we can trend that back down to a reasonable loss ratio.
Now, on page two of the document here, if you look at the, on the top of the page, it talks about, it shows the rates of our current renewal against our, our recommended renewal. We are facing right now a 20% increase on the medical this year. Once, once Wendell and his team had brought back those renewals, what we looked at is we looked at some options here to try to, some cost containment options to try to offset some of those costs. And we are recommending to, to offset some of that, raise our deductibles 250 on, $250 on the plan. And then also, we're recommending, right now, our current stop loss limit is, our spec limit is 50,000, meaning we pay all medical claims up to 50,000 before the stop loss carrier takes over the claims responsibility. We're recommending moving that to a $70,000 limit from the 50,000. What that does, and clarify Wendell for me if I speculate wrong, but what that does is it lowers our, our fixed premium cost by 134,341, but also our max potential liability, it raises it slightly. So basically what that means is that we'll pay less on the front end guaranteed fixed premiums, but it does, and it only slightly increases your max liability if you have a high claimant that hits spec loss.
That's right. Yeah, it basically gave you an extra 134,000 worth of cash flow inside the plan to cover claims and it didn't raise your maximum liability.
Okay. And so on page three of this document, there is, if you look, there's a four here, excuse me, four year history here. You know, we are trending, unfortunately, our, our health claims have risen. You know, over the past four years, you can see that our expected liability, which that means is that's what we expect to pay through claims and premiums. But you also have what's called a maximum liability, which is the maximum liability that the city would pay out, assuming you have high cost claimants up to your spec limits. And so to offset those costs, we're working on, like I said, we're requesting to raise the deductible 250 and then the spec up to 70,000. And then also work, continue to work with Strong Side on their team on the pharmacy programs to reduce pharmacy costs is, is a big portion of, of some of our strategies. Wendell, do you want to talk a little bit about the PACE agreement recommendation too that you're recommending for us?
Okay, yeah, we're always trying to look at fiduciary liability and different levels of protection that we can put inside the plan would be a third party administrator that would take the terminal claims liability off your plans. That means that any, any terminal claims that, that are denied by the carrier instead of the plan or the administration being liable for those, we put that to a third party. Largest third party planned fiduciary liability company in the United States. I think they do a very good job. It's a very reasonable fee to have that, that, that service put in place, but it's, it's certainly a very prudent thing to do.
On the bottom of page three here, you'll see the, it's a pretty simple bullet point of the changes to the medical. When staff looked at that, what we wanted to do is look, identify those cost containments that wouldn't have a, would not have a direct impact out of pocket on the employee unless you had high utilization of the insurance. So a good example is we have, we have 100 and roughly 147 to 150 planned members, employees on our plan. Last year, we had 41 planned members that never used our health insurance. So that's an example of if you raise the deductible, those 41, if that utilization stays the same for the new plan year, they'll never see an impact on the deductible. They would only see an impact if they have a high cost claim through the deductible and through their max out of pocket. And we felt like that was the most advantageous way for us to try to offset some of our costs and also, you know, still protect employees' benefit levels at the current state that they're in. Okay, all right. Is there any, anyone have any questions on the medical before we move on to the other plans? So our other plans, and this is the good news, our ancillary plans, our vision and our dental plans are running well for us. We actually had a two year rate guarantee when we did the renewals with them last year. So those are going to be, then those are managed through Delta Dental. We'd like to renew with Delta, that plan's working, so we don't really see a reason to change. And our costs are pretty, pretty flat lining those plans. Next is our life insurance plans and our disability plans through standard. To me, from a, on HR level, I think this was one of our most biggest successes last year is the implementation. Not necessarily life insurance, we never want anyone to have to use that. But our disability plans really worked well for people that, you know, unfortunately, we never want to see one, have anyone have to use those disability plans, but those protections are in place for employees. And we've had employees take advantage of that this year and it's something that we think we want to, we want to keep in place. Standard has given us, I believe, a rate guarantee to 2022.
We negotiated it to 2023.
So yeah, so we have two year rate guarantee with standard and we don't really see, and that's working well for us. They've been really good about administering disability benefits for the employees without, without any gaps in income. And we'd like to continue that on for, for the next plan year. Okay. The one thing that will, on bottom page four, that will offset costs that will be to our increases that, and we've talked about this before with our health retirement account that we had, that we grandfathered in last year from the prior plan year. That, that HRA plan costs the city $63,600. We chose not to renew it next year. So that liability does come off this year under the health plan. So that will help us offset some of the increases that we're facing on the medical side.
Can you remind us what the HRA plan is and what that means?
Yes, good question. It is a health reimbursement account. Essentially what it is, it's tax free dollars as provided to employees to use towards copays, deductibles, over the counter medical, medical expenses only. And so every employee that was eligible, they had to go through, it was a prior plan before I came on board with the city. They had to go through a wellness check to be eligible for that. And each employee got $600. And so what we did last year is for those employees that hadn't used those funds, we grandfathered them over. The original program on the 1920 plan year, I think, was right at 100,000, but we had 63,000 left in unused funds through employees that were eligible, that were issued the HRA cards. And we grandfathered them and allowed them to roll those funds out. And employees actually have until April 30 of this year to use up those funds. But what it does, it, that 63,000 will not be part of your, your annual liability cost going forward.
Can you have a question about?
All right.
Was that for everyone or just people that showed proof they had insurance elsewhere? So they got that?
Now, what it was, it was, when the HRA program was put in place, it was a wellness program. And so what it was.
Oh, it went to everybody that?
Yeah, and it was for, and it was for the employees, only not their dependents. But if an employee did, like, it was a four point wellness check. If the employee did the wellness check, you know, like, for example, got annual screening, physical, they were issued an HRA card for $600. And so not every employee was eligible. I don't remember the exact head count. I believe we had somewhere between 50 or 60 that were rolled over from the prior plan year that went and got all the wellness checks.
Okay, because the county had a, has a health reimbursement account for employees that show proof they have insurance elsewhere.
Yeah.
And then they get money instead. And I guess here, if they have the insurance elsewhere, they just say, I don't need it, right?
They do, yes, if they go on.
But they show proof.
Yeah, they do, they do. Like if they, like if an employee's spouse has an employer and they, they can go on their employer's plan. And, you know, so there are employees that have their spouses or dependents on other group healthcare plans. If, you know, it just depends on what's really, it really, at the end of the day, depends on what's best for their particular family situation, on which plan's more advantageous to, to that family. Okay, all right. Looking on the next page here, on page five, we do want to bring attention to this. This is one of the things that our employee assistance program, we actually put that in place. Real quick, that's been a very successful program, that's managed through standard. Again, that's part of our overall contract with standard and we don't really see a, a need to change that. And now, part of, and we, we, we approved this contract, or had it approved last year, but we did, due to COVID, we, we chose not to go through with it. But we are recommending that for the current plan year, we are recommending a dependent eligibility audit for all group members on our health plan. And what that is, is that is to make sure that the, our group healthcare plan has proper utilization of dependents on there, meaning that only eligible dependents that truly are eligible are, are on the plan and the city is accurately paying for those dependents. We don't know what that'll look like, but we're recommending the renewal of that contract, which we did sign it last year. We just, again, you know, we chose not to implement due to COVID related reasons. But we're looking to implement that June, June the 1st. The cost on that is $10,000 for the dependent audit. But I think it is another cost containment mechanism to make sure that our plan utilization is structured the way it should be. And Wendell, I don't know, you're, you're very well versed in dependent audits. I've done them before with my prior employer, but if there's anything you'd like to expand on that?
Yeah, it's just the second part of an audit we did. When we took over this plan last year, year before, there were other entities that weren't eligible to be on the plan. So the plan says that all active employees are eligible for the insurance plan and then they're legal beneficiaries and dependents. And so what we want to make sure is that, that only legal spouses and children are on the plan because 64% of your costs on this plan come from spouses and, and dependents. And so we just want to make sure that only eligible spouses and dependents are on this plan. It's just a good prudent process to kind of finalize the auditing process and ensure that the appropriate people are on the plan, that we're paying claims for people that are eligible and that the costs being supported by the taxpayers and city are appropriate.
All right. So further out on page two is really a good snapshot of what our 2020 total healthcare plan looks like against our 2021 health plan. This is all cost components included. Because we're self insured, our expected liability on that plan is $2.6 million. And max liability, I believe, is 3.2. So what is staff is recommending is on the renewals, is that we budget to the expected through each of the department's allocations of 2.6 million. But we will have an additional 500,000 that we would need to set into our reserves in the event that we hit maximum liability. Which, you know, when we talk about maximum liability, that's, you know, goes back to those healthcare claims that could hit your stop loss limit. Unfortunately, that is a, you know, that is something that's hard to forecast because we all know things, you know, claims happen, different life events. But we would need to budget to the max and then have that 2.6 million and have that additional 500,000 in reserves to cover us in the event that we hit the maximum potential liability on the, on the, on the plan. So in summary, on page six, what we're recommending is renewing with Trustmark, our current TPA. They're running well with us. I can speak that they provide us great metrics. I'm able, we're able to track metrics on our healthcare on a monthly basis. Things I do share with the city manager regularly. And renewing with Crum and Forster, which is our stop loss, our current stop loss carrier. They're working well for us and we're recommending moving the stop loss limit from 50,000 to 70. As I mentioned earlier, that would offset 134,000 on the fixed premium side reduction, but only marginally. And Wendell, tell me, I can't remember the number on what the marginal increase, was it about 4,000 on the max?
But you have $3,800.
So, and that, and that's not a guaranteed cost, that's just a potential max liability. So it's more advantageous, we believe, to go with the 70,000 limit on the front end to reduce that fixed premium cost. Continuing using with Cigna, we've had really good luck with Cigna, they're a national network. Most all of our employees' providers, their PCPs are all in network. And we feel like that should continue on the way it is now. You know, ruin, renewing Strong Side's e-benefits programs, you know, Angel RX programs working well for us. We, we actually have, and call me if I'm wrong, Wendell, I believe about, we have about 50,000 in potential savings that we're working through right now.
54, we just went up to 95 this week.
And so what that means is that those programs work for us. If we didn't have those programs in place, we would pay additional 95,000 for just a handful of prescriptions on an annual basis, so. Yeah, and I think I looked at our numbers too, just so everyone knows. Our, the RX or pharmacy program comprehenses about 30% of our total medical costs. So you have about 70% medical, which is a combination of our premiums and our aggregate claims. But then the other 30% of our cost is through the pharmacy. So we've got opportunity to really work towards lowering some of that 30% liability. I mean, yes, we have script pharmacy costs, but anything we can do to help offset that. I mean, if we didn't have the program in place, we could be looking at an astronomical increase on our pharmacy side. Okay. And then of course, you know, another thing that we're going to like to do is renew telemedicine that, we pay for that, or teledoc, it's about $3,000 annual. Even one or two visits virtually offset any cost that the city would pay because if someone goes into an urgent treatment clinic, for example, yeah, they pay a $50 copay, but the city still pays for the total claim on that visit. And so one of the things we're going to focus on this year during open enrollment, which we've set our open enrollment dates from April, or, excuse me, March the 30th to April the 14th, we're going to focus on us, when I say us, I'm talking about employees of the city being smart consumers on our health plan. And that's going to be things like knowing when to go for an emergency room as opposed to going to using telemedicine, like if you've got a minor consultation, if you run to the ER, those claim dollars go way up, right? But we have programs like the telemedicine where you could get seen remotely that help us drive our claim costs down, the Angel RX program. And we want to focus on wellness education too. So those are the things that we're really going to focus on this year during open enrollment to try to bring our claims down. Because at the end of the day, as an employee group, we're in this together as a city. So we, city staff, we can't, just one person can't do it. It's got to be a team effort and we're going to try to drive that this year. And then of course, we talked about, you know, the PACE agreement. Wendell spoke to me briefly about it and I think that's very, very warranted because we, the city doesn't want to make liability or risk liability of making claims decisions and have an independent review board with a, and I believe they're all licensed certified attorneys, correct? And so that allows us to have an independent legal counsel review those claims for us. And what that means is if there's a claim that gets denied, the plan administrator has to go through a review sometimes. Like if the employee or the member files an appeal, this takes the responsibility of that final decision making off the city and allows that be done by independent third party. be done by an independent third party. Okay. And then, of course, the last thing is, you know, we talked about budgeting to the expected liability across the departments, but then the max liability of setting that 500,000 in reserves, and then raising our deductibles. It'll be, because it's a two-X deductible, what that means is if you raise a single by 250, the two-Fit deductible on a single plan goes from 500 to 750, which is our current tier. And then, our current family plan is set at 1,000. That means it would go to, to 1,250 deductible. I believe that's the way it was, 1,250? Let me double-check and make sure I have that number correct. I think it was.
750 to 1,500.
1,500, I'm sorry, 1,500, so two X, so. And on the back here, I've got some, just graphs here. I just wanted to show the commission just basically hard dollars on what we spent over the last, from 2018 to current, since the city went to a self-insured plan. You can see that our plan, 1819, this is your total healthcare cost. You know, you can see it has risen from roughly 2.1 million to what we're projecting of the expected this year, 2.6. So over four years, we've looked at a, roughly a $600,000 increase. And so we've really, you know, that's, staff's goal is to focus on those cost containments to drive those down, because, you know, the city did have a pretty challenging year with health claims this year, and, which is what is, kind of drove that number up. Other one here is, I've got, the second graph is just our medical loan. You can see that that, you know, that has obviously increased substantially over the years. And again, we're working to reduce that. The third one is our dental plan, which stays pretty flat. The reason you see the drop from 1920 to 2021 is because we moved from a $1,500 limit on our dental down to 1,000, because we had no utilization over $1,000. In essence, we were paying for a plan that we weren't using, so we brought that money down. And that was, part of that funds was actually reallocated to pay for short-term and long-term disability programs that didn't currently exist with the city. And then the last one is just a summary of just our, the expected liability on the medical plan and how its costs allocated, which, you know, a pretty, in any healthcare plan, your medical is going to make up a majority, so the medical may, will make up about 90, up to 92% of our total claim cost. So, so in summary, you know, staff's recommending to, to do the renewal with, with these, these plan proposals.
Can I, can I ask you a question, back on page three?
Yes, sir.
Out-of-pocket max individual and family? That 3750 and that 7,500?
Yes.
You've looked at past experiences to see that this is not going to happen to too many of our employees, I hope.
It, not, very few actually hit the max out of pocket. I mean, there is a handful. You will have, and that was, goes back, you know, that's one of our cost containment strategies, is because without, you know, you've got 41 of your employees' plan members last year that never used the, 41 members didn't even use the insurance last year on our health plan. So this would only impact those that had maybe a high-cost claim year.
Yeah, and keeping in mind that we're still paying the full cost for the individual and the family, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
We are, and, and we looked at that, and, you know, we felt like this was the best mechanism to offset the cost, because if a member doesn't utilize the insurance, they'll never have a financial impact on that as far as the increase, and it just allows us to kind of offset some of our increases.
And the other issue I wanted to raise a question about was the, the prescription drugs thing, that 3,500, that's 70, 7,000, that's, that's like a max as well.
Yes, so the 3,500, if you're a single employee, the maximum, if you have a, a copay, you know, we've got four tiers. We got your, you know, your standard tiers on your maintenance medications, then we have especially copay. That would be the max. Once you hit that limit of 3,500, you wouldn't pay anything else for the rest of the year on your pharmacy. Yeah, and our, and the way our plan is, even though our plan renews May 1, our deductible and our max out-of-pocket runs on a calendar year, so they reset January 1 of each year. And so that's how those accumulators are calculated.
Okay.
So, that's a great question, Ms. Atkins, and that's, you know, we felt like that was the best strategy to move those costs, because not everyone will get impacted by that.
Other questions, these two gentlemen?
All right. Well, thank you for your time, and like I said, we'll, our goal is to do renewals first two weeks of April, and then get all of our, we'll have all our plan documents presented for signature, hopefully at the next meeting.
We need to entertain a motion to approve this recommendation.
I'll move for approval of resolution 2021-03-22-01.
Second?
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number six. First reading of ordinance 1962 Economic Development Authority in a local agreement. Mr. Colfield, Mr. Jackson?
I'm going to let Stephen talk. He spent the most time with the document after we met with the county, and so we'll let him.
Sure, thank you. I am happy to present to you a joint ordinance approving the City of Danville and Boyle County Fiscal Court, creating the Danville Boyle County Economic Development Authority. The city manager and I had a nice meeting with the judge executive and the county attorney, I guess, within the last couple of weeks, and discussed the proposed draft, and then have agreed upon some, the final version that is presented before you tonight by ordinance. And they have, are going to consider it at their next fiscal court meeting, which I don't think is tomorrow, but I think it's maybe the.
I think it's next week.
Yeah, I think it's, it's where we're off a little bit right now. So the ordinance in and of itself is simply just a regurgitation of the whereas paragraphs in a, in a local agreement, so I'll, I'll start there. And I will direct you to the fact that we did change the name, as acutely observed last time, to the Danville Boyle County Economic Development Authority, as opposed to Industrial Development Authority. You will still see references to the Industrial Development Authority Act of Kentucky, but that is, in fact, how the General Assembly defined it. So that's why you'll see references to it, even though our name will be somewhat different. And again, to hit the highlights for you, we simply outlined the, the powers and duties of the organization. Some key points, again, in paragraph three, this was at the request of the county judge, saying that the city and county agree to finance the authority's operation and activities on an equal basis, determined annually by our respective bodies. And then, again, of course, if additional funding would be necessary, then the parties would have to agree to it. And the members of the authority, as outlined in page four, are as follows. The City of Danville mayor, the Boyle County judge executive, one commissioner appointed by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville, and one magistrate appointed by the Boyle Fiscal Court, and then a chairperson to be selected jointly by the fiscal court and the Board of Commissioners. So that would be your group of five. That is somewhat different from the draft proposed to you last time, which had the mayor and immediate past mayor, the judge executive and immediate past judge executive. The, those that met on that issue acknowledged that the goal was to provide some consistency. However, they thought it was best tied to current elected officials and move the immediate past, or a past judge executive and a past mayor as an ex officio member to help assist, but maybe with the work of the authority if they choose to. However, not make them a voting member of the authority and actually leave that in the hands of the elected officials plus the chair. And the rest of the document remains as stated last time, so those were the, the changes to the membership, and then the funding piece to be equal. And then the name that, that was reflected in here. So I'm happy to answer questions, but it is before you with a request that you have a first reading on it tonight, if you find it necessary or appropriate.
May I take the privilege of?
No.
Making a motion for the acceptance of the first reading of ordinance number 1962?
I would love to second that. What is this?
Stephen, so this document in and of itself doesn't change anything the way it is right now. This is just agreement. Should, when we get our industrial authority up and running, this will be the, the governing document of that, or the?
This will be, this is the important first step of, and once it's passed, it will allow it to be corporately formed and members appointed to it, and will allow it, most importantly, to be funded in your budget cycle this year upon approval. It doesn't do anything other than that, but form its existence, allow you to place members on it, and then fund it in your current budget cycle if you deem it necessary and appropriate this fiscal year.
And the other question was, they had the mayor but not the city manager, is that by choice? Is that just because the mayor's elected and you were leaning that way, or?
It was not, I did not insert any names or positions into the, the membership. That was simply what was suggested and incorporated.
It's not something I have a huge problem with, I just wondered what the thinking was.
Well, I think the city manager and city, city and county staff will be there for advisement when needed.
That's correct. So on the organizational chart, it shows that both the city engineer and county engineer are under the, the staff, so they, it's critical that they have staff involvement at all of those meetings, and their engineering services will be provided by both the city and county engineer on that authority.
And the city manager, too?
The city manager is certainly free, I mean, these are open meetings, and so, I mean, the city manager would be free to attend, but as written, the city manager would not be a voting member. Where the city manager would come into play is upon presentation of a budget, whether to fund it or not. So, I mean, in theory, if the city manager were excluded for whatever reason, he or she could present a budget that would provide an appropriate level of funding based upon the access given to the organization.
Well, and in theory, this board will hire an economic development.
There'd be two people hired, actually, based on the organizational chart.
Okay.
So the staff, which would be submissive to the board and direct report to the chair. And I can't remember exactly how they're, they're labeled, but one is basically more of the administrator, economic development administrator, and one is more like an economic development.
Marketer.
Marketer. Oh, I think we call them project coordinator and marketer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that chart is actually in this.
It's not incorporated in there. That was meant for discussion purposes, so that would be incorporated into the bylaws of the organization, but it wouldn't be appropriate for the actual agreement itself.
Right, and how staff interacts with the board is determined by the board, too.
Well, the staff.
So, so we, we left a lot of that area to be developed, fully developed and conceptualized during the bylaw development, which is organized by the board. We didn't want to predetermine what every little detail of that operation's supposed to look like.
Right, right. This is the structure, and then the board itself will fill it in, and.
But it, it is worth our thoughts, our consideration of the mayor versus the city manager, a day-to-day person, but I see it's not an elected position, but, and the Boyle County judge is an elected position, but also a, a day-to-day operations of the, of the county.
Sure it is, and to that point, you could simply have, you could replace one of the commissioners with, or you could do it one of two ways. If you want the city manager to be one of your members, you could state that the city manager is a member, and then you could say that the second member from the Board of Commissioners is either one selected at your leisure, the mayor, or any commissioner for that matter.
Yeah.
But on a staff level, the city manager's going to be working with that staff and, you know, I know, we're getting in the weeds, I'm sorry. I would just like to say.
No, no, it's not in the weeds. It's important that you have the conversation if there's a question, but.
I'm okay with the city manager not being a voting member, because I know that city manager and staff, you know, this is just a way for everyone to work together, and this is the guiding document to make that happen. And I would just like to say that I really appreciate everyone's willingness to consider this, because this was prompted by a recommendation that I made to this commission about six months ago, to redirect our funds to something of this nature.
I'd advise you to wait till the second reading, passing to the second reading. Don't jump the gun, because they haven't passed the first reading yet.
Well, we got here, and that, that was important, and we got here in a timely fashion, and I'm glad. So now we just need to fund it.
Your question is a good one, as opposed, as, as, with regards to membership, who should represent the City of Danville in this endeavor? I mean, that in essence is the question, and I think now's the obvious time to make it.
My, my thinking is, if you're looking for continuity and consistency, having the city manager, in most places, most towns, they last longer than the mayor, than their Danville, but, so that, that's, that's my thinking on that entirely, so, but, whatever you guys want to do, I'm certainly not, that's not a deal killer.
I think, to the extent that the city manager is the, supposed to digest all the information and to provide it to you on an equal basis, that seems an appropriate move, that the city manager be included to a degree. And this one, frankly, we hadn't talked about by mere oversight, I would say, but I think it's, it's a point well-taken. And in our form of government, it's entirely appropriate, and I would say advisable, to have the city manager included at some point. I think the more pressing question would be on the second person. Should that, in fact, be the mayor by title, or should it be someone, the mayor or commissioner, selected by you?
Yeah, I, I was, my, my thought when Kevin brought it up tonight was that you've got the day-to-day person at the county sitting there that can make some decisions, in a sense, and you've got, we don't have the day-to-day lead guy for the city involved. Let's just say that if Terry was the mayor and the lack of experience of day-to-day operations of the city, we'd have to seek out and find the city manager quite frequently. If there was a wise person sitting on that body when they were meeting, so if the city manager knocked there on a regular basis, then.
But the city manager is not going to be the main facilitator for this board. The board is going to have staff.
Well, the main facilitator's going to be the chairperson, probably, yeah. Staff's going to take the lead from the, the five members on the board, is the way I look at it. I'm just trying to make sure we have a balanced relationship in having the county judge exec and the city manager, the day-to-day lead operators of the city and the county. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of passing this as it is. We can always come back and do an amendment to it and do a first and second reading over again, let everybody know we're moving in that direction. I'd like to hear the mayor have an opportunity to, to have some input into this as well. I know he's had a lot, and that's why the, the Danville mayor's on there, but I'm not opposed to that, I just think, it's all Kevin's fault, he brought it up, no.
Well, I will say this, to the extent you're trying to make budgetary decisions at these meetings, the judge is obviously empowered to do that, and the city's going to lack, as it's written today, the city will lack affirmative knowledge of what can be produced by the city without the city manager. So to that extent, I think it's appropriate the city manager is involved, and like I said before, I think the question that remains is if you put the city manager as a member, which seems like the appropriate thing to do, who is the second member from the city? Is he, he or she simply someone that is selected by this commission as a whole, or is it the mayor?
Yeah, and I'm always in favor of saying city manager slash member of the commission. And then the second person in my mind would be the city manager. But again, that's just JH speaking out loud.
Where do the others of you fall on that? If the city manager is, in fact, stated as a member, who should the second be?
What did you say, Mr. Atkins? Just a commissioner?
A commissioner selected.
Yeah, that.
Which could it be the mayor?
Right, sure.
Yeah, that's why I said, that's why I said the mayor slash commissioner, yeah. Yeah, that's why I said the mayor slash commissioner, yeah. See, we often have to get that there's five commissioners. You know?
Right, and that in fact is consistent with our former government. I mean, the law is very clear, the mayor is but one commissioner. I mean, that is what, and that's not to devalue his or her role. It's simply stating the former government that we have.
I just think since, well, I read this over the weekend. I didn't go there. I left it alone. But I would like to see the city manager be one of our two voting members just simply because of the knowledge about, well, a real good city manager will have work and knowledge of the day-to-day operations as well as the day-to-day budget, right?
We have a good one.
What's in the budget and what's not in the budget, right?
But this is going to have a separate budget.
Yes, but as far as if the authority says we need $100,000 to do X amount of, whatever project it is, if the city manager is not at the table, then an individual commissioner or mayor is not going to be able to obligate the city in that manner and is not going to be able to know if it fits in the budget or not, frankly. But the city manager, in theory, should. While he can't commit the funds, he or she is going to be the one, he is going to propose the funds, and it knows if it fits or not. So if that, if the will of the commission is to revise Section 4 to provide that the City of Danville city manager be a member as well as one commissioner appointed by the Board of Commissioners, which could be the mayor, then the document can be so revised with that revision and ready for, again, a first reading tonight. You'll have another opportunity, if you change your mind, at the next meeting for a second. The reason we would like to press forward a bit is because of the time crunch of trying to keep the fiscal court and the city commission on par so the agency can be developed this budget cycle and be funded, frankly.
I would prefer to pass it as is at the moment and let the mayor weigh in at the next discussion. That's just how I feel.
My stance right now is that I would want to push to have the city manager as one of the two voting members. How we, what we decide about the mayor slash commissioner. It could say City of Danville mayor, because we always say the mayor is his or her representative. And then we could also say that instead where it says one commissioner appointed by the board, we just say the city commissioner, I mean, the city manager as the second person.
The ma, I just want to add, the mayor will have input. I mean, you're going to have a second reading. I'm saying if there's consensus among at least three of you to have, it's a city manager and a member of the commission, then I would ask that you pass it in that manner simply because it gives greater flexibility and so as not to develop, to delay it for a third additional meeting. If you pass it as is, and then we revise it next time, then it will be a first reading next time, where we're asking for a first reading tonight. It has potential to have a second reading at your next meeting if unchanged.
I would, I would agree to that, you know, since you said that the mayor would be able to, you know, have input next time. So I would agree to that.
So you're saying change it now?
For the sake of efficiency, I would change it now where we think we have consensus that it state the city manager and a commissioner. And then at the next input of the mayor at the first meeting, if he, he can voice his opinion, and he may approve of that, or if he doesn't approve of it, he can state that. In fact of the matter, if there's consensus among at least three of you towards that language, it'll pass regardless. So I would advocate in getting it, have a first reading on what you think you have consensus for tonight.
We have a motion on the floor, though, right?
We...
We do.
Yeah, you want to amend your motion?
We have a motion as presented.
Yeah, we can always amend the motion.
And a second, Ms. Holland, do you withdraw your second?
Or can we just amend it?
Oh, yes, I withdraw my second.
Now you can amend it.
We want to make some changes.
Yeah, now you can, now you, do you withdraw your mo, your original motion?
Yes, I withdraw my original motion. So my new motion is that the members shall be city manager and one commissioner as appointed by the Board of Commissioners.
And otherwise approve the document with that revision.
And approve this document with that revision.
For a first reading.
For a first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to split hairs on this and, and hold anything up. But I do, I would like some time to process that. So we'll, we'll discuss that when the mayor is here also.
So we have a first. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second with the amendment.
Now we have to read it into the...
Yeah, she needs to read it.
I think it'd be important to leave the mayor's position in there, but I think we just, yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk, want to read it as amended?
Yes, this is the second, or the first reading of the City of Danville Board of Commissioners Ordinance Number 1962, a joint ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville and the Boyle County Fiscal Court, creating the Danville-Boyle County Economic Development Authority Incorporated.
All right, and I'd like to call for the question. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Atkins.
Yes, ma'am. Who is that?
Smarty.
Mr. Coffey, city managers report?
We are right in the middle of the budget season. I'm not going to hold us up. Beyond that, I'm not going to drag it out. We've talked about it a lot over the last few weeks. And if you have any questions, give us a call.
We accept that report, that very brief report, very gladly.
Shortest report ever, Earl.
Here to public?
You'll just tape that, play it every time.
Opportunity for the public to address us?
There are no comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner comments? Be like Earl, all right?
Earl was so thorough on Thursday that I think it's given us lots of good material. So that's all we need for today.
Well, it's Women's History Month, and Aretha Franklin, one of my dear sisters, queen of soul, is on, it's coming out of the movie. It's called Respect. And it's also Aretha on Netflix, YouTube, oh, I'm sorry, the History Channel about Aretha Franklin. And then I just have a question to direct the staff or to the city attorney. Do we need to draft something up? I keep talking about an ML King committee for becoming one of our standing committees. And I'd like to request if that's what's necessary so I then can get a consensus from our commissioners to take it to the county and see if it can be a joint community ML King committee. How do I get that done?
Any permanent committee of the City of Danville needs to be adopted by ordinance. If it's not a permanent committee, it can be an ad hoc committee, which typically, typically would have a sunset provision and could last for any given duration. But, but there would be an expectation that it sunset. So if your idea is to have a permanent committee, standing committee, then it should be by ordinance with the appropriate provisions adopted.
The other caveat is that, which way does it need to be in order for it to get into our budget to satisfy funding for it? Or does it matter?
Well, the, the city could fund whatever it wants to, whether it's a committee. Committees don't receive funding. So the city supports committees through its general operating budget, but committees do not have funding. Community agencies can receive funding by the city, but the city does not fund its committees.
So if you, we set aside an ML King committee, it could then do with financial proposal and request funding, just like the beautification committee or somebody?
Well, no committee of the city requests funding. It's only supported by the city. But they, but the committee doesn't, committees are not allowed to accept or expend funds. The city would do it on their behalf, potentially, which I know we're, it's the semantics, but...
So when beautification asks the public to do something, we respond because that's a committee that you all established. And so the public works, though, makes a decision on that expenditure, execute that purchase order, and the solicitation if one's necessary, et cetera. So what we should do, if that's something that you're ziring, is we'll try to catch you and try to understand what you're talking about specifically. And then we'll talk about that at a budget meeting coming up.
You all know why the, yeah, you know, yeah. The urgency for me is that we've had the last two ML King holidays be underrepresented in this community because of a lack of planning. And because 2018, the city set up an ad hoc committee, and I sort of directed it. We had a true community-wide ML King celebration on the 50th anniversary of the assassination. The January after that, and this past January, it was just like, it was forgotten. So if you got a committee of the city and the county working together on it, and that's the one task each year is to plan a community-wide celebration, we'll get to having some respectable celebrations in our community in honor of Dr. King's life and legacy. I talked long and early, and I'm sorry, but...
Can they request funding for a specific event?
It would be no different than the cemetery committee saying, hey, we would like a shelter in Bellevue. And then the city staff would review it and decide whether to recommend funding for it or not, or placement and where it would be. But ultimately, it would be a recommendation of the city manager and staff coming to the Board of Commissioners, not from the committee. Committees make recommendations to staff or to Board of Commissioners, and then staff makes a recommendation or not based upon what is presented.
And that's okay. I just...
There is a way to get funding.
Yeah, I just, I just want to get it done. And if you put five to seven citizens together to say you're going to do this, then they need to know what the process is as well. All right, okay, I'm good. I'll talk to you later on about that. Any other commissioner comments? If not, item eight is payment of the bills. Chair, entertain a motion to pay the bills?
I move for approval of the bill list in the amount of $288,274.26.
Second.
Any questions? You're none, Chair. Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Josh, I appreciate you coming to the podium. Your next resolution, 2021-032202.
Yes, in your package, you have a letter we received from a property owner on Third Street asking that the city declare surplus and sell a, an old right-of-way when Fackler Street was realigned to line up with the other side of Fackler Street, on the other side of Third. There is a, a section of property of the old right-of-way that was, it's never been surplus. It's still in the city's, still the city's right-of-way. So we were coming tonight to recommend that, that we move forward with the surplus of that property. I think where we would go from here is we would, I need to, we need to dig in the details of the exact location of the property. I was talking to the surveyor Friday. He's got, there's, there's some changes we need to make on there. They did, they did not announce, they did not survey the section of it that would be on, that would be on the east side. As you can see on the plat that we were provided, they didn't look what's, I think that's, is that Clark Street? That's south of Fackler. There's a, there's a triangular piece that, that they did not survey that we will need to get surveyed as well because we, we need to surplus the whole property that's there that's city's if we're going to move forward with this. So, and then at that time, also, we will look into any conditions that we need to put into the sale of this property that, that makes it line up with our, you know, the commission's desires and with the downtown master plan and things like that. Also, I think, I was thinking about this earlier. We've talked about zone changes so much. Is this, is the, I was going to ask Stephen, is this the time that we would, when will we declare what zone this property would be? Because right now, it's, it doesn't have a zone because it was right-of-way. I don't, I don't know how that...
I would think technically it would, as it's be, would be consolidated into the existing track. It would incorporate the existing zoning of the neighboring track. I think that would be the proper legal assignment of it.
So this, approving this resolution gives you the staff direction to continue to work on the surplus and then finding out all the finite details.
Yes, yes.
Chair, entertain a motion?
I'll move for approval of 2021, resolution number 2021-032202. I'll second.
Thank you, ladies. Any other discussion on readiness? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 10? Rebecca Heathany?
Is she here?
About the 911 recorder maintenance.
The agreement that you have in front of you is just a yearly maintenance and support agreement for from ADS. It does include 24/7 coverage, is on-site support.
There she is.
There she is.
Hello?
Thank you, ma'am.
She was watching and had to get upstairs.
She was on a call.
I'm going to be quick. This is the maintenance and support agreement we have with Applied Digital. And this is for our recorder that records our 911 calls and our radio traffic that we have to pull for court and stuff. And we do the enhanced service, which is the annual fee. It's 24/7, 365 coverage. We also have 24/7, 365 remote access if they can access in and fix the problem. If that does not work, they will do a service call.
I'll move for approval of resolution number 2021-032203.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Rebecca. I was getting started for you, but you're good.
Mr. Coffey, Mr. Dexter, is there, there is not a need for an executive session, right?
There is a need for executive session for personnel and, and...
Litigation.
Obey on litigation.
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation, I'm sorry.
Litigation. I'll do it. Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61.8101F. And also to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation for which disclosure of details might compromise litigation posture pursuant to KRS 61.8101C.
Second.
All those opposed to going into executive session, say aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to come out of executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the city and manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. Staff is recommending the hiring of Ryan White to the position of police officer.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Staff is recommending the hiring of Caleb Lowery as the municipal utility inspector.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Staff is recommending the hiring of Matthew Sparks as a telecommunications officer.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Anything else?
No sir, thank you.
Move adjourned.
What's that? Are you move to adjourn? And second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you guys.
He had his stuff in his arm.